I've got, why don't we switch over to our statement on strategic investment? If we may, and I'm going to apologize, I don't know the best way to do this. But other than to to read as a statement and then we'll, we'll make this available online a little later on, but in April 2021, the academic senate of the University of Utah approved a report evaluating whether endowment fund investments in fossil fuel in fossil fuels balance the institution's economic, ethical, community and environmental stewardship. That report was then shared with the university board of trustees. And what we'll read is our response to that and where we are believe we should be going forward. So the University of Utah's Board of Trustees is grateful for the thoughtful and comprehensive work of stakeholders across campus, including ASU, the staff council and the 16 member academic senate ad hoc committee for divestment and reinvestment investigation, who provided the impetus and the research for this initiative over the past year. As the body responsible, responsible for the stewardship of the university's endowment funds, currently at just over one billion, the Board of Trustees agrees with and endorses the report's final conclusion that the university should modify its existing investment pool guidelines and implementation strategy to establish principles and approaches that further its established charitable purposes regarding climate change and sustainability, as well as its fiscal goals in future endowment investment decisions. The Board of Trustees notes this approach is consistent with the priorities of Utah's elected leaders as outlined in their 2018 concurrent resolution on environmental and economic stewardship. That states, we should prioritize our understanding and use of sound science to address causes of changing climate and support innovation and environmental stewardship in order to realize positive solutions. And encourages state entities to reduce emissions through incentives and support of the growth of technology and services that will enlarge our economy in a way that is both energy efficient and cost effective. More on the stage of states approaches available file via via the KEMC gardner policy institute's 2020 study, the Utah roadmap solutions on climate and air quality. This new approach to investment acknowledges the ethical and operational complexities of moving toward the university's goal of carbon neutrality by 2050 in an economy and civilization that is relied heavily, that is heavily reliant on fossil fuels. The natural and manmade systems affected by our changing climate are complex and interconnected. And the University of Utah must be part of the solution. The board recognizes that the future of energy is changing rapidly. While the benefits of this change will be felt globally, we share the concern that many rural counties in Utah could face a negative economic impact. The university must remain committed to working with leaders in these communities to minimize unintended or negative consequences. As the state's flagship university, our commitment is to help all 29 counties in Utah thrive. Working together, we believe the benefits will be for all of Utah and all sectors. The board recognizes the important role traditional energy continues to play in Utah's economy. And in particular, the economic livelihood of rural parts of our state. We, we appreciate the hard work of so many individuals in these industries and the role in helping to grow our state. Their thoughtful generosity has enabled the university to grow and excel. We recognize that energy transformation is a process and one we were all taking together. By working together with many of our industry partners in these sectors, we will be able to accelerate the energy transfer may transformation and achieve a cleaner and more sustainable world. Through prudent and balanced leadership and an emphasis on innovative research, the university is positioned to help propel economic opportunity throughout the state. We are committed to working with local and state leaders as well as industry partners as we transition and work toward carbon neutrality. Here's the board's vision, our planet's changing climate and air quality represents an existential threat to communities and ecosystems worldwide. It is a global crisis requiring a global effort to mitigate the effects of a warming world. Achieving sustained clean energy must be balanced, solution oriented and evidence based. It will require continued leadership, scholarship, research and analytical thinking. Something for which the university as the state's flagship university and the region's largest research university is uniquely positioned. The university investment strategy should achieve healthy financial gains over the long term by investing in funds and companies that share the university's values. The university has already made significant progress towards implementing sustainable best practices. These include more than half of the use electricity is now sourced from geothermal solar and hydroelectric sources. Achievement of gold designation from the sustainability tracing assessment and rating system in January 21. Reduction of campus greenhouse gas emissions by more than one third since 20, since 2007. Continued investment in interdisciplinary sustainability research led by the global change and sustainability center. An increasingly integrated and comprehensive approach to sustainability across campus under the guidance of new chief sustainability officer Kerry Case. Continued curricular efforts to foster sustainable sustainability literacy in every student. And President Taylor Randall's resigning of the president's climate commitment and active membership in the university climate change coalition. The U has also had a commitment and a continuing commitment to rural Utah. And these examples include the Utah coal country strike team. In this locally led effort, the University of Utah partners with the team of community leaders to lead outcomes and diversify the economy in carbon and Emery counties. The strike team, which was a finalist in 2019 national competition sponsored by Schmidt Futures pursues a fourfold strategy, including workforce training, housing revitalization, tourism, infrastructure and economic development policy research. The strike team with the support of the Utah legislature Schmidt Futures and the University of Utah invests in the economy and helps residents achieve a more economically stable future. Investments and innovation policies, policy steps include the following scholarships. 137 student scholarships to train and retrain Utah's coal country workforce. Teacher training grants to carbon and Emory school districts to help fund high quality computer and information technology training, teacher training. Placemaking grants to Price City and Castle Dell City to assist with downtown beautification and main street revitalization. Tourism infrastructure grants to carbon and Emory counties and Price City and Castle Dell City to assist with assist with tourism infrastructure. Co-working space and entrepreneurism, entrepreneurism, funding to renovate co-working spaces in carbon and Emory County. That support remote work and local entrepreneurism. Marketing assistance with small business global marketing and business outreach. Housing assistance with land and materials for sweat equity housing construction program. And tech industry signing of a charter with silicon slopes that creates a silicon slopes piece chapter. The effort serves as a national model for how a public university can organize a multi disciplinary data driven mission focused strike team to help coal dependent communities. And then on University of Utah health. The tribal rural and underserved communities program helps leverage medical education to address primary care physician shortages in Utah's most underserved communities. The rural and underserved Utah training experience program works to improve medical education and training, healthcare access and long-term socio-economic benefit for rural and underserved communities of Utah in the intermount west by expanding interest awareness and placement of students and physicians. The graduate medical education resident engagement and training for underserved and rural needs provides graduate medical education trainees clinical and cultural exposure to Utah's rural and underserved health needs. Clinical access to rural communities via 74 telehealth programs across six states, including six acute service specialties. University of Utah Energy and Geo Science Institute and US Department of Energy Forge Project, which was $140 million investment from the US Department of Energy over five years to build an experimental geothermal laboratory near Milford, Utah. University of Utah College of Mines and Earth Sciences 1.5 million dollar project from the US Department of Energy to study the potential transforming coal associated mineral resources in Utah and Western Colorado's Unwind Basin region into high value metal mineral and non-fuel carbon based products. On our board action, following the planned retirement this year of the university's chief investment officer Jonathan Shear, we have asked the university's administration to recruit a new chief investment officer with responsibility for managing a values based endowment pool. Of note, we are grateful for Jonathan's stewardship of university funds during his career. Under his leadership, the university's endowment has grown to more than one billion and has consistently provided stable and increasing cash flow to support the university's mission. The first task of the new chief investment officer will be to craft a plan to clearly align the university's investment strategy with the institution's values and mission, including campus or including responsible stewardship and financial returns. The plan will include regular reports to the campus community on the report on the performance of the investments and alignments with the university's values. The new investment plan will balance the social impacts of investment and fiduciary duty. Companies in the university's investment portfolio will be regularly evaluated and reviewed based on their actions and progress to ensure continued alignment with the university's values. A subcommittee of the board will continue to review the academic senate's report. The board plans to continue an open conversation on strategic reinvestment and looks forward to sharing that plan with the campus community for feedback and comment in the coming year 2022. So that is our report and I thought maybe we could have a, a little bit of a discussion on this and that, that was the most talking I've ever done straight. So if you all want to wake up now, have others talk. So you know, on our board, I just want to ask Jim trustee sorts and if you would, we talked a lot in here about having a values based investment strategy. I know this is something you yourself and your professional career are very involved with tonight, not to put you on the spot, but to put you on the spot. Maybe talk, talk to us a little bit. We talked about what does that mean? How does that, how does that work?
Yes, many of you may be aware that I've been involved in impact investing. And of course, we've endowed a center at the University of Utah that is nationally recognized for its work on impact investing. But it's a real approach to proactively invest in accordance with your values. So obviously, climate mitigation and clean energy, these are important values, but there may be other values that we have such as diversity, equity and inclusion, sustainability, health and wellbeing. And in fact, if you go to the website, the university has really defined what its values are, student success, research and teaching excellence, diversity, equity and inclusion, sustainability, global engagement, community to commitment to community and leadership. So really what impact investing would be embodying these values in the investment decisions that we make as it relates to the endowment. And how can we further not only the financial success, which is really important and needs to be equally you know, engaged and measured over time, but also the values that we hold and implementing them in our investment strategy.
Thank you.
Maybe I take that Christian, I think that's a good question Katie. And, and I think the best way to think about that is as Jim said, first and foremost, our investment strategy needs to and continues to have to be aligned with both our strategy and the values of the university. And I think as we step back and look at the big picture, the academic senate came with some very thoughtful and nice recommendations for the investment committee. And our view is, is that we should be thoughtful as an investment committee moving forward in a subcommittee of being committed to those values. And in order to do that and make a proper transition, it is helpful and thoughtful to bring in a new chief investment officer, which we will be doing here over the next several months. That job will be posted shortly. John Shear and his team have done a very nice job. And as we further align our investment strategy as an institution will do that and will be transparent, will look at long-term views and gains of what the institution can achieve with its foundation. And I think this new investment officer will help us further our investment strategy aligned with the university's values.
You know, I mean, we're, we're talking and I don't know. And I'm not in the space, but we talked that over the course of the year will be able to more articulate what goes in under these these value driven statements and we, I don't know, we'll be posting, you say that that new
Transparency, as the university already has been and continues to be with regard to its investments and those will be monitored and thoughtfully, thoughtfully looked at and aligned with the university's priorities.
You know, one of, one of the things we talk about in here. And it's something that we have a lot of discussion too. And I think it's helpful for others in the audience or who may listen to this is we really do believe that the University of Utah, we, we mentioned a few of the things that we're involved with, that how a research institution can help in this, this transition. And I, I know Randy, you're, you're always big on talking about the role of a research university and any, any thoughts on how you, you actually see this?
Christian, as you're yeah, thank you. It's a, it's a great question. As you were reading this, I was thinking that if you think of the eight state region for which we are the sole AAUR one institution of higher ed, South Dakota, North Dakota, Wyoming, Idaho, Utah, Nevada, New Mexico. Who am I missing? Montana. A disproportionate amount of domestic and global energy originates from that eight state region. I think we're uniquely poised to lead and to inspire a focus on clean energy. Christian and I, a few months ago, were in a presentation where a leader in, in, in global clean energy was presenting and he talked about the space race we had in the sixties. And he says, today we need an earth race. Today we need an earth race in which we create this vigilant focus on sustainability. And so as you think about the university's responsibility to lead out and scholarship and innovative research new technologies in increasing learning so that the solutions, the technologies frankly make it cheaper and easier to save the earth than to destroy it. And that in doing so, the university not only leads out on that research and that innovation, but we, you know, we're going to propel IP and jobs and social and economic benefit by, by, by the research that we're doing and frankly, by, by, by the role we have in this region. Right before this meeting, Dr. Reed handed me a sensor that he's been, do you have it right? Okay. So, so as you, as we talked about, Dr. Reed's could take a sabbatical to do the research. And one of the things he was working on was there's a sensor, solar powered, less than $25 per sensor that collects and, and uploads data, one of which its functions will be tracking air pollution so that we can tackle, you know, so that we can better understand what's working, what's not working and, and, and invest in the areas that are having the highest impact. And it's these types of things that are illustrative of what, what the regions are one AAU institution has a responsibility to do. And frankly, not just responsibility, but I think a profound opportunity.
You know, thanks, thanks Randy. You know, there, this, oh, I mean, there's a lot of questions around this and, and we're not going to be able to answer all of them, but I, I think there's probably a few that maybe let, let's, I'm just gonna, some that just come to my mind that could be asked, and I'd love to have the board's input. You know, some of which might be, what does this mean for, is there an impact to the role of the college of mines and earth sciences? You know, that are, are engaged in this. And I would say there is no impact. We very much need the, the research and the innovation coming out and the students coming out of the college and, and, and earth science. It's college of mines and earth sciences. I mean, if you look at, to do this, this energy transition, you, we need materials. And, and we need to find good ways to do it and new materials and, and we really need help. I
I think that's the most important point, Christian. This is a transition and it takes a very long time to transition. So let's be thoughtful in the transition. And we have so many capability, so many capable individuals at this university that will help us make that transition.
Anyone else having comments or questions that they, they think would, would be helpful in this discussion?
I think what's been said really is a great start, obviously. Bringing on the expertise to help us do this, working as a group to, to define the values. I think we're committing to make this transition, which means we're going to be divesting from things that don't meet the values that we have or that we set. And then we're going to proactively define and then invest in those that do. And it's not something that happens overnight. My foundation, for example, made the decision to do this with its endowment. And we did it in really breakneck speed. It took about three years, however, ultimately. And we're continuing to refine, we're continuing to measure because measurement's an important part of this to, to help us understand and verify the impact. But we've also been able to outperform the benchmarks financially. So this, this can be done, but it needs to be thoughtful. It needs to be, you know, methodical and, and work closely with the professionals that will need to engage to be able to do this.
Right. And, and, and I agree, Jim, and a lot of companies are, are in this transition as, as well, and they're establishing new do new benchmarks and where they're growing. And I, and I think it's
This has had a profound influence on companies that realized that by becoming sustainable, taking care of the environment, taking care of their employees, taking care of their supply chains, taking care of their communities. These are stakeholders in addition to shareholders. By taking care of them, they create value in the long term. And that's really the opportunity that we have in the decisions that are ahead of us.
And that's where making significant investments and do that, in doing that. And that's why we should be thoughtful and patient as we go through that process, because many of those historical fossil fuel companies are making this transition also. So there is still good opportunity, potential with those companies.
I agree. And our student body president Jess asked, asked a couple of, or me, a couple of us a question out in the hall. And I thought it was a really good one on accountability of the board of trustees. I mean, we come out with this statement where this is the direction we're going. How does accountability work that we maintain this direction? And, and in a, in a lot of areas that we maintain, not, not just the values based investment, but everything we're focused on in our commitment to all 29 counties in the state and what we're doing elsewhere. And we, you know, president, maybe I can speak from the trustees, but I know your commitment to this is, is equally as strong that
Yeah. So I think we're excited about this new direction. It'll be fun to get, you know, an officer in here and be able to see, craft a values based vision for the, for the endowment. What I would like to see from that officer, I hope we put it in the job description, is that there's regular reporting that we're very clear about the metrics that we look at, what we term, you know, what we look at in terms of by, is it investing consistent with our values? In this specific case, how are we affecting the environment with each of our, with each of our investments? And I would hope that as we hear that investment report every year, we bring it to the board trustees and we review it based on those criteria that we set.
Yeah. And then we, we also mentioned that there'll be a subcommittee and we do have the investment committee. Right? Investment subcommittee. Yes. And that, that'll be a place that, so we'll be able to have continued commitment plus just the overall direction of the university of being a university for all of Utah. Will continue to make sure that this transition is benefiting all sectors of the economy and all areas of the, of the state. Any other comments, thoughts that are questions board members may have? Jim?
Just, I think this is a great opportunity to lead out amongst our peers and everybody I think is faced with the same. I think the approach that we're taking will be to lead and look forward to this in the future.
Yeah. Yeah. I would add this just to your question. You know, we talked about football this year, D1 and the journey from where we began to where we are. If you think about the journey in this migration, we really began, you know, almost 20 years ago here on campus. That's four or five graduation cycles ago. And so it's a journey and, and we're highly committed to this. If you look at some of the accomplishments, accomplishments, Christian, that you read about, we have as many R1 wins and sustainability wins as we have D1s. It's just, we don't always see those at the end of the day or the end of a game or the end of a match. And so we're on this, this road. It's been a journey for us for a long time and we're highly focused and highly committed to where we are and where we need to go.
Thank you. Any further comments or we'll move on in the, again, I really want to say thank you to, to all the trustees and to the academic senate report. I know a lot of time went into that. And I know as the trustees, you And I know as the trustees, you all spent a lot of time thinking through this and researching and formulating your thoughts and how we go forward. And I also know going forward, there's going to be a lot more time as we start to detail more of those, those values. So I, I just want to say thanks to, to everyone.